Several departments as well as elected officials. So, we're ready to start whenever you are.
Okay, thank you so much. Rockdale Water Resources, we are ready for you.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. This morning I will be, first, I'm Kim Repeek, Director of Rockdale Water Resources. This morning I will be presenting our 2025 operating and five-year CIP budget. I'd like to first start off by giving some context, as I usually do, to what makes up the Rockdale County Water Resource Budget. We are responsible for wastewater and water services here in Rockdale County. Wastewater, we're responsible for five wastewater treatment facilities, twenty-eight pump stations, six thousand four hundred thirty-seven manholes, two hundred sixty-two miles of sanitary sewer mainline. On the water side, we're responsible for one water treatment facility, one reservoir that provides water to the county, five point four billion gallons, six hundred and six on six hundred forty acres, five water tanks, and six hundred seventy-three miles of water distribution mainline. That's what we're responsible for that makes up this budget for FY25.
And Director Peake, I just want to say thank you for that part right there, just right there where you are. I'm just kind of putting a comma there right now because outside of our human capital in Rockdale County, water is our greatest asset.
Yes, sir.
And the fact that Rockdale County owns and operates its own reservoir is a big deal.
Absolutely.
It is our responsibility, Commissioners, to make sure that we are protecting that water source with everything that we have. But I just wanted to point that out because I know there's a good number of people watching and listening to this presentation this morning, and our reservoir is high up on the radar when it comes to security and protection of our number-one asset outside of our, the people that live in Rockdale County. So I wanted to make sure you put, you did a very good job categorizing where we are in terms of the assets, and particularly the reservoir itself.
Yes, sir.
Please continue.
All right, thank you. And I will start off with our vision, mission, and values for Rockdale Water Resources. Our vision, our vision is to be the premier water and sewer utility in the state of Georgia, championing economic development and service delivery while embracing environmental stewardship in Rockdale County. Our mission is to remain perfectly positioned to provide the ultimate natural resource, water. Our values are quality, dependability, and exceptional service. Next slide, please. On this next slide, I will talk about our opportunities and challenges. I will start with our successes for FY24. This year, Rockdale Water Resources, for the second seventeen consecutive year, we received the GAWP Platinum Award for our Jeez Mill Water Treatment Facility. We placed second for the best tasting drinking water in District Three.
So who placed first?
What county was it?
Good question. Newton County. Newton County, first place. They placed first.
Okay, what do we have to do to get?
And they got the best in the state, too.
We've got work to do. But we're getting there.
We got a job, baby.
Because we have been number one before.
Yes. I need that crown back from Newton County. I need a strategic plan on how we're going to get from number two to number one because you don't understand the, there's, there's outside things that go on with those of us that, you know, and I know I'm not going to be here next year, but I still want.
The level of the competitive business is high.
Right. I would like to say that we're number one. So I need a strategic plan.
Okay. We will work hard. Next time, we are going to say number one, okay?
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am, and I will continue.
My Commissioner, you know you'll probably be on the other side with me when you get that announcement.
Right, I understand that, but it doesn't matter. I put it in place. I set the goal, and I put the strategic plan in place. So I will be wearing that crown.
Then maybe you need to be a judge next year.
Don't give me ideas.
Director, please proceed forward.
Yes, sir. Okay, we will continue. We also launched new cost-senior technology this year. Our five wastewater treatment facilities, for the fifth consecutive year, we received the GAWP Gold Award. For the 2023 Consumer Confidence Report, we confirmed that there was no contaminations or violations in our drinking water. Now, the 2023 Consumer Confidence Report is always a year behind. We received that from Environmental Protection Division, so this is the most current report. We was also awarded three point eight million dollars from a federal grant for water and sewer projects. We was awarded one hundred fifty-five thousand dollars from the Georgia Environmental Finance Authority Drinking Water State Revolving Fund for the lead and copper service line replacement program. And we also finalized our bactrometric survey results for USGS this year. Our opportunities. Our opportunities are to focus on Asian water and sewer infrastructure, workflow management, wastewater capacity, additional grant funding, provide additional training, career development for staff, educational outreach, technology automation specifically, and apprenticeship program for critical water and wastewater personnel. Our challenges. Our challenges are succession, increased in cost and material supplies, competitive job market, and supply chain. Next slide, please. On the next slide, I will talk about the FY25 goals and initiatives, which is also a part of the department's realimagined Rockdale strategic plan. And I will first start off with access. Access. We plan to review, repair, and replace Asian infrastructure, water and sewer. We plan to complete multiple G dot R dot water and sewer relocation projects. We also plan to replace our copper and lead water service lines. Equity. Equity, we would like to continue education, training for leaders and emerging leaders. We would like to partner with local PTA's, schools, and social civic groups through our utility education program. We also would like to do an audit on our water and sewer accounts. And we would like to participate in a water and wastewater apprenticeship program with ARC and local colleges. Our innovation. Our innovation is championing conservation and reduce financial impacts to the utility and its customers by automating leak and high-consumption alerts. We plan to implement streamlined and self-service options for customer care and business affairs. Launch next phase of automated meter infrastructure, AMI, replacing older AMI meters with meters with stronger signals to automate meter reading processes. Our operating budget summary. Our operating budget summary for FY25. Our total operating expense proposed is forty-five point nine million, which is a difference of five hundred seventy-five thousand from FY24. Our total personnel services and benefits. Proposed for FY25 is six point nine million, which is a difference of one point eight million from FY24. Our total estimated budget impact for FY25 is fifty-two point nine million, which is a difference of two point four million for FY24.
So are you saying that with the personnel services and benefits, you need more employees?
Personnel service and benefits, we actually had more employees this year. I don't need any new employees for FY25, so it would impact our budget for FY25 because the middle of this year, I gained more employees.
Okay.
Okay. All right, we'll go to the next slide, please. Next slide, operating budget request. Operating budget request is actually the request that impacts our budget for FY25, and I will start off with technical services. We have three major impacts. There are technical services, professional services, general supplies, and material. Technical services includes our contractual services for water, wastewater, customer service, and engineering operations. And the FY25 cost is fifteen million, which is a difference of six hundred nineteen thousand from FY24. Our professional services is sanitary sewer rehab and preventive maintenance. FY25 is three point one million. It's a difference of ninety thousand dollars from FY24. Our general supplies and materials is an increase in material cost and general supplies. FY25 is two point three million, which is a difference of thirty-four million from FY24. Our total estimated budget impact is seven hundred forty-three thousand four hundred twenty-one dollars. Next slide, please. On the next slide, I will talk about our current organization structure for the department. For Rockdale Water Resources, we actually have three major divisions that covers Rockdale Water Resources. And I will, I'm sorry, we actually have four major divisions that cover Rockdale Water Resources. And I will start with the first one, which is administration. Administration, I'm the current director, I head up administration. Right now, we only have one vacancy in administration, and that's the capital projects manager. Go to the next slide, please. The next slide is our customer care and business affairs. We have our deputy director of customer service and business affairs that head up that division, and we currently have no vacancies in customer care and business affairs. Next slide, please. We have our deputy director of infrastructure that heads up that division, and we currently have a senior utility tech vacancy, three utility tech vacancies, two admin op coordinator vacancies, and two field inspectors.
So Director, just to give you a chance to breathe a little bit, then I want to ask a question.
Yes, sir.
What is, now I know the answer to this question, but you did about two or three vacancies you just mentioned.
Yes, sir.
For the sake of educating the public, what is a utility?
Technician. A utility technician chairman is a pretty much an inspector. They go out and they inspect jobs in the field for us. You know, we make, on the water and our wastewater side. So they go out and do an assessment of a problem. If a customer called in and said they have a problem in the field, maybe a water leak or maybe a sanitary sewer spill, this particular technician will go out and inspect this site and verify if there's a water or sewer problem and call back in to our contractual services partners to come and maintain, do maintenance on that particular water or sewer service.
One of the things that, and I'm going to tie this into yesterday, okay? One of the things that you pointed out, Commissioners, that came from the directors is we talked about the number of spills that we've had in the county over a period of time and receiving demand letters for fines that we are, as a board or county, responsible for paying from the EPA or EPD. It's my understanding that these technicians help in a proactive and a preventive way. If they can catch something early on, it can prevent these types of things from happening. Is that correct?
That's absolutely correct.
Is that part of their responsibility? I want to make sure because I'm not the technician.
No, you're absolutely spot on, Chairman. These particular people, they go out and do visual inspections. A lot of times, they do prevent and maintenance visual inspections also. You know, trouble spots, we have trouble spots here in the county, and what we consider to be trouble spots, spots that we have recurring problems in, either on the wastewater or water side.
So I really appreciate that because I think a lot of times, folks hear these terms and sometimes the acronyms that we internally, we understand what they are, who they are, and what the roles or the scope of the work that they perform on a day-to-day basis. But the regular, everyday citizen hearing you throw these terms out, they don't know why you have this many people, the number of people, what they do, and the reason, you know, what they bring to the county and how they help protect, as I mentioned earlier, our number-one asset. But then, they save this county money from the number of spills and things that take place. So I wanted you to break that down. These are not just people. Now, give me the number of vacancies for those texts you have right now.
For the utility tech.
Give me that again.
We had three utility techs and one senior utility tech.
The total number of utility technicians are?
Four.
Okay, and you have three that are vacant?
We have four, well, we have three utility techs and one senior utility tech. Now, senior utility tech is a more experienced person, like a lead person.
Right, but you're saying those are the positions that are currently vacant?
They are currently vacant. Yes, sir.
Okay, that's critical to your operation and to the overall operation. I wanted to make sure I pointed that out because, again, lots of folks are watching and listening, and you want to make sure that you can articulate and explain the reason why, the justification for these particular roles.
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right, just.
And are those, those are not new positions?
No, ma'am. These are not new positions. These are current positions that we have now.
Right, so have they, have we ever had all of them filled, or is this a recurring problem, or?
No, ma'am. Now, the utility tech and the senior utility tech, now when we say new, these positions were created in FY23, so they're not new for FY24. We just hadn't filled these particular positions yet. We're still trying to recruit for these particular positions. So they're not new positions. What we have been doing, we have, I'm sorry, Chairman, we have been using our contract partner support for personnel, which is SERM. My plan is to bring in-house personnel in to be able to do their same job.
But let me, let me just.
So I guess the recruitment of employees is the issue because that would save us a whole lot of money.
Absolutely, absolutely.
We approved a whole bunch of contracts with SERM yesterday that are millions of dollars.
So the Commissioner is spot on. So let me, let me bring some clarification to this. Help me out, Director, if I'm a little off.
Okay.
Commissioner Williams is correct that we've had some challenges in the area of recruitment and hiring and attracting people who are qualified to perform this work that we need. In the interim, you've had to rely on our contractors to help support these areas that have been vacant so that we can continue to protect the county.
That's correct.
From a cost-saving standpoint, once we can hire our own staff up, our own in-house personnel, we can let go some of these outside contractors. We can't afford to let go the contractors until we get staffed up completely with our staffing levels internally so that we won't, we can continue the proactive and preventive measures to not have to deal with those EPA fines and costs. Because, again, as I stated yesterday, none of us control Mother Nature. It's going to rain, we're going to have inclement weather. We've got to have these technicians who can be out on the ground to be able to prevent and be proactive in their work to make sure that when things are coming along the area in terms of spills or any leaks or things that we need to be aware of that we're ultimately going to be responsible for, that we can get ahead of it.
Absolutely.
But the challenge in the workforce is finding competent, qualified talent who's willing to come out to Rockdale County for the pay and compensation that we're offering. And sometimes, that's challenging for talent management to find those individuals. First of all, I said qualified, competent talent, okay? Then the second thing I said was the pay. Who wants to come to Rockdale for the amount of money that we're paying when there's multiple other counties in the metropolitan area that outpay us? So it is a challenge, and we do have to rely a lot on our contractors to fill the gap. We're doing the same thing in planning and development with SafeBuild. We don't have enough internal inspectors onboard with the county, so we've had to rely on SafeBuild. SafeBuild is a company that contracts those out to be able to go and do inspections with new building and permitting and those kind of things. So I wanted to make sure, a lot of times, we go through this process, people are listening and watching, and they hear the number of positions and roles. They don't really understand sometimes why we have these number of people onboard the organization to be able to fulfill these tasks, to help us deliver the services that are required. And as the county continues to grow, you got to have a number of people who can meet the demands of a growing county.
So that was going to be my, that's my concern.
Okay.
I would like to see something proactive from water and sewer that looks at, we have three new developments that are on the agenda for this month, I mean, next month, for planning and zoning that are, all of them are proposing over two hundred units. How can we impose, if there are impact fees that we can impose to help with some of the costs, but what is going to be the personnel needs in the future when we have all of these new developments? If they are approved, come onboard with multiple houses, multiple uses? How, is there a way that we can project the future needs that coincide with the development so that there can be a plan in place so that we can start looking at how we're going to have to adjust things to meet the needs of the community as it grows?
Okay, there's a couple of things we can do, Commissioner, and a couple of things that we are doing. Right now, we're trying to put what we call flow monitors, flow monitors all over the county. Right now, when I first got here, that was a contract, I, flow monitors. When I got here, it was necessary for me to make sure we have flow monitors twenty-four hours, seven days a week. What that'll do for us is help us determine our flow capacity. You know, we have a lot of capacity concerns here in Rockdale County, so that'll help us determine capacity. We don't have to contract somebody, bring somebody in to help us determine how much capacity we have. So with these new developments, when they come in, and we have these flow monitors in the system, it allows to know how much capacity will be used on our sanitary sewer. So that's, you know.
Will that help with determining needs for personnel?
For personnel, yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. It also helps for needs for personnel because someone has to monitor these flow monitors. So that's personnel.
And let me say something else about the flow monitors. You did a great job a couple of years ago educating me about how they work and the importance and how essential they are to our operation. Commissioner, something that may be very significant to the work that you've already been doing in the space of economic development, by having these flow monitors in place throughout the county, having our own flow monitors, it allows us to monitor and track and trace the capacity of water flow, water and sewer capacity throughout the county as we're considering expanding existing businesses or bringing in new businesses. I've said it time and time again, we got to make sure that we have enough water that if anybody in Rockdale County flushed the toilet or turned on the fountain faucet, you've got water flowing out of your faucet. So we never want to be out of capacity or at near or max capacity. These flow monitors positioned strategically throughout the county allows us to track and keep up with that because it could get to a point where, from an economic development standpoint, we're looking at bringing in a certain type of. we're looking at bringing in a certain type of business. If they have a certain amount of water usage or require for a certain amount of sewage and then when, and we realize that that is going to compromise the amount of capacity we have, we may need to say no to them because we never wanna be in a situation in Rockdale County where we don't have water. Or we don't have proper sewage flow, flowing through the community. So these flow, flow monitors definitely allow us to track, monitor and trace the amount of capacity we have. That's, that's critical to the, I mean, to Rockdale as a whole.
Yes, sir.
And from an economic development standpoint.
Like you said, people are watching and people are listening, so we do that. I want everybody to know that we already, every development that we bring in, every expansion, we are in constant conversations with, um, water and sewer to make sure that we are, um, that anything that we bring in is gonna not...
At a good capacity.
Right, exactly. So I want everybody to know that we are, we, we, we take all of that into consideration when we bring development, at, um, at any development through CRETCE or the Development Authority into this county.
Yes, ma'am. Water and sewer has a sign-off on it saying we have the capability of help.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so, so I wanna come back to the numbers.
Yes, ma'am.
If we rate, are you saying is, is the lower pay the main cause of these vacancies?
Yes, ma'am. Uh, well, it's pay, not only pay, you have, have certified people. Now, when I say certified people...
Well, okay, so I have a, I have a good friend who's very, she's got a degree in chemical.
Okay.
You know, chemistry or whatever, I don't know. She works for the Cab water.
Okay.
I said, why don't you come to Rockdale? Cause she lives in Rockdale. Because I get paid more.
Right.
And so it seems to me if we look at raising the pay and become, so that we can get people, then we're gonna save millions.
Yes, ma'am, absolutely. Because water and sewer is a specialty. A lot of people don't like to say it, but it is, it is a specialty.
Right.
And as the commissioner's...
Water certified and sanitary sewer certified.
Absolutely director. As the commissioner is talking, I, I see Executive Director Holmes making a way. She deals with talent management.
I know she's gonna tell me that, well, we raise water, we have to raise everybody, but...
This is the space, this is the headache that she works in on a day-to-day basis trying to find people not only who are talented, but who are willing, as I stated earlier, to come down here for the peanuts that we pay when they're competing against Metro Apollon in Atlanta. So you could tell it better than I can.
Let me just interject one thing. So we independently have raised the pay for sheriffs, deputies. We've raised the pay for fire and rescue. Why can't we independently raise the pay for our water, RWR, for our resources?
Yes.
In an effort to, by putting in that investment, saving us money down the road.
Correct. So I'll, I'll talk about the utility locate position as well as the senior utility locate. So you're right, when we look at the minimum pay for both of those positions, we're looking at maybe thirty-seven thousand for a utility.
Nobody can live on that.
Correct, but that, that's the minimum. So one of the things that we take into consideration is that has a salary range. So if someone is coming to us with those experiences, then we do take those into consideration. We also do have that flexibility to be able to post the job. So when I say minimum, of course, we can't pay anybody less than that, but that's not the goal. The objective is to get someone in here with some experience, if they have experience or even the ability to be able to train them. So utilizing that salary range to be able to post and recruit at a higher range. We do have that ability, Madam Commissioner.
So I think the problem though is when people look at the job posting?
Oh, yeah.
They'd see the minimum and they're like, I'm not...
We don't have to post at the minimum though. That's what I'm saying. We have that flexibility within that range. So we do have to stay within the salary range, but the minimum is not the requirement. So we're going our recruiting, we're looking at other entities. We have that flexibility as long as we stay within the range. So my team can work with RWR and we can come up with a posting that's gonna attract and be able to go out and get some additional candidates. So casting our nets a little bit further, but we definitely have the ability to post above the minimum.
Is there, I know, I know we talked about this, but what about the, um, workforce development program that we were starting with, um, Georgia P. Montechico College? I know CRETCE was very, 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 um, interested in making sure that that came to fruition and I would love to see that move forward also.
The apprenticeship program, I'm gonna allow this team to speak on it, but to answer your, your question, we can absolutely post above the minimum and we can recruit at a higher rate than what we're doing right now.
Okay, but then still, how does that compare to the other company, other counties around us?
Right, so taking a look at that market study that we're gonna be introducing to you guys. So taking a look at what the other counties are doing and making sure that we are remaining competitive and that we're offering a fair wage. So that is one of the things that we commit to as part of our, um, pay and class plan, that we have to do a market study every two to three years. So it's time for us to do that again. So we are gonna be bringing those numbers before you guys to take a look at what the rest of the markets are paying and making sure we're in line with that as well. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Executive Director Holmes.
You're welcome. They'll talk about the apprenticeship program. I'm gonna sit down for that, but I'm gonna let you guys talk about that.
Thank you, Director Holmes. Let me add one thing if I can. Um, Chairman, uh, we hadn't had a rate study in a while. I need a water, water resources, so we definitely need a rate, you know, have a rate study. A rate study would help fund these particular positions that we're actually trying to bring in also.
Well, let me, let me, you're absolutely correct, Director. I'm just gonna, I won't put a comma, I'm gonna put a period there, okay? Uh, I think that is certainly an internal conversation we need to have, we being the BLC with the executive staff, about a rate study. Uh, from a time standpoint, uh, I know citizens, uh, really, uh, get to the edge of their seat when they hear rate study. Uh, but I understand what you're talking about. In order to fund and to be able to pay for it, we need the level of revenue coming in, uh, to support what we're trying to do in the future. Which is a very valid conversation, it's need to be talked about, but it has to be done in the right setting at the right time.
Yes, sir. Absolutely.
So, uh, I think we don't want to alarm folks, but we do wanna do is what Executive Director Holmes just did and what you've been doing all morning, is bringing awareness to the level of the work that we have to perform and the challenges that we have in terms of attracting and retaining the kinda talent we need here in Rockdale County. Um, we've got a lot today. We've been, this, your presentation in itself is bringing out a lot uh, because we wanna do what Commissioner Washington was talking about, educate the general public about the reasons why we are where we are and what we're doing. Oftentimes people hear these numbers and requests for proposed budgets to operate the next year. They don't understand why we need this, why, why they are essential and these people are essential. These employees are essential to the work that we perform. I'm gonna stop there because you've got more of your presentation to continue with and we've got other folks to hear from today.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
I just have one more comment.
Go right ahead, Commissioner.
I don't see that we need a rate study at this point if we can hire people at a higher pay rate, look at that piece of it and reduce our expenses.
Okay.
And then we, you know...
Yes, ma'am.
The, the citizens don't have to pay more. They're getting, you know, we're getting more for our money.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. And thank you for that. Thank you for adding that. And to answer your question about the apprenticeship program, uh, November, we're, we're looking for that to start in November. We've already done all the paperwork, everything has been approved through the BOC. So we're just waiting on the program to, to happen. So we're expecting this program to happen in November.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Okay, and I will continue our budget for FY twenty-five. And I think I was, uh, I've, I've finished up at the infrastructure, which is our deputy director that heads up that particular group. Next slide please. And our last group, but not least, is our engineering section. Our engineering section is headed up by our general engineer manager. And we have one vacancy there, which is, which is a principal engineer. Next slide please. Next slide, I will go to our five-year CIP from two thousand twenty-five to two thousand twenty-nine. Five-year CIP. Rockdale Water five-year CIP, CIP, I'm sorry, includes automotive equipment, technology programs and improvements, construction and heavy equipment, building improvements, renovations, expansions, new buildings and infrastructure improvements. On automotive e- equipment from two thousand twenty-five to two thousand twenty-nine, we have a proposed budget of two hundred fifty-five thousand dollars for all five years. For technology programs and improvements, we have a total budget of one point eight million for all five years. For construction and heavy equipment, it's a zero budget for construction and heavy equipment because we contract those services out for right now. Uh, building improvements, renovations and expansions, we have a fifteen point eight million dollar budget over five-year period, CIP. New buildings, zero over five-year period. Infrastructure improvements over five-year period from two thousand twenty-five to two thousand twenty-nine, we're asking for one hundred point seven million dollars. Our total CIP for Rockdale Water Resources over five-year period is one hundred eighteen million, four hundred thirty-five thousand dollars. This completes my presentation. Thank you. You have any questions?
I just wanna say thank you. Let's give the director a round of applause. A great presentation this morning. Lot of information, lot of education in everything that you, I particularly liked the way that you broke down the information, uh, Director Peek, and you really gave a substance behind everything that you were proposing. And I think that's the key word that everybody should keep in mind. The word is proposed. This is a proposed budget. Let me say it one more time. People remember things in threes. Proposed. We've not made a vote, we've not made a decision, Commissioner Washington, Commissioner, we're in a hearing. This is a budget hearing. We're hearing the proposed budget from each, Madam CFO, the proposed budget from each department that operates the county. No decision has been made. Uh, our directors are making proposals before us and stating the claim, the needs, and you've done that this morning. You've done a good job. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you Chairman. And Commissioners, thanks.
Are we ahead of schedule, Executive Director Rehlas?
We are right on time.
On schedule.
Okay.
At ten forty-five is stormwater.
Okay, I, I, okay. Oh, yeah, there he is.
He was in the back.
There's Mr. Magic right there. He just...
He needs walk-in music.
He just appeared.
Should I introduce him?
He's appeared.
Okay, I apologize. I'd like to introduce Director Simmons.
No games.
Take, 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 take a moment, sir. Yes, sir. All right. Yes, sir. He walked in like Houdini, just showing up, just popping out of the wall. It's just, you just can't, Mr. Magic.
The only thing, I forgot my reading glasses, so I'mma, I'mma work it out. Doing this laptop and that big screen right there, we gonna work it out.
So you gonna be doing some squinching?
Just a little bit.
It's twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine, thank you.
It's the one right after water.
All right, Director, you can rock and roll.
All right. Good morning, uh, Rockdale County stakeholders. Madam Commissioners, Mr. Chairman, good morning.
Morning.
We are here to talk about the FY twenty-twenty-five stormwater budget. If I can get everyone to just say yes, I don't have to go through this presentation. I can go ahead and walk on out of here.
Well, only, only if it was that easy.
He said he wasn't playing no games. Then he immediately contradicts that.
And I need you to remember that, that key word, proposed budget.
Yes, sir.
Proposed.
Yes, sir, yes, sir. Proposed budget. Well, good morning. I bring you greetings on behalf of the Rockdale County Stormwater Management Department. Uh, we have a serious vision, mission and values that we follow through here in Rockdale County. We want to develop sustainable stormwater infrastructure for a highly engaged community here in Rockdale. We also want to propose, propose effective stormwater management services for this community. We also want to contribute to this community through educating our citizens, promoting thriving businesses by having great infrastructure in this county, sustainability of that infrastructure, and then also promoting a great quality of life here in Rockdale County through our maintenance of our stormwater infrastructure program. Some of our successes we've had have been the completion of over thirty-five contracted stormwater projects with our contractors and over a hundred stormwater projects with our in-house personnel. Typically, these projects include stormwater infrastructure rehabilitation, ditch cleaning and driveway pipe replacements with our in-house crews. We have also completed renovations to our field crew building at Tatum Road. You know, as you know, your field crew, they, they're gonna feel as good as the conditions and the facilities that they have available to them. We're very happy to get those facilities upgraded. You know, we got them a training room there, put in a few computers so they could work with their times and different little things they need to do administratively, uh, with themselves there. It's a beautiful facility. Uh, we had a complete and on-time submission of our MS four report to Georgia EPD this year. And just basically in layman's terms to, to the people, the MS four program is designed to manage and reduce stormwater pollution in urban areas. You know, this program requires us, you know, to implement practices that minimize the discharge of pollutants into local water bodies in the area. Uh, we also are proud of our, award of our contract for our stormwater master plan. I'm sure a lot of people ask, well, what is the stormwater master plan? In a nutshell, the stormwater master plan is a comprehensive strategy designed to manage and mitigate the impacts of stormwater runoff in our community. We can also improve and water, improve water quality and reduce flooding in the communities through infrastructure improvements, policy upgrades and best management practices. Some of our opportunities here in stormwater for the upcoming year, equality in stormwater rates. You know, right now, regardless of the size of your house, all citizens pay the same rate. We want to bring equality to that by charging citizens based on the amount of impervious surface that they have on their properties. We also want to train stormwater personnel, which, including customer service and outreach. Customer service is a very big part of stormwater management. Uh, citizens really appreciate it when we're able to address their concerns or at least return their call in a timely manner. That is a real serious focus for stormwater management. We also need additional funding. So as I was talking about saying, yes, additional funding sources for stormwater infrastructure projects. As we know, recent years, uh, costs, construction materials, labor costs, fuel costs have all gone up in recent years, which contribute to what it takes for us to maintain this stormwater infrastructure here in Rockdale County. As I previously mentioned, outreach and education.
And I wanna stop you there because I, I really wanna commend you in that area because I think with the, the work that Ms. Maria Flint has done in the area as a utility education specialist, a role that we've not had before in the county to really educate, uh, our citizens, uh, starting with our young people, our seniors, our business people. Uh, she's in our schools, our HOAs, our nonprofit, our churches, educating folks about the critical do's and don'ts of water, RWR and stormwater management. Um, I was driving through the county the other day and I saw a landscaping, no, it wasn't a landscaping crew. It was a resident who was mowing his yard, had mowed his yard and, um, had his blower blowing all the, um, leaf, leaves and debris from the trimmings into the storm drain, into the storm drain. I mean, he was, he was blowing away with that very powerful blower, blowing it right down the storm drain. I said, oh my God, he doesn't, he doesn't know, he doesn't understand. But this is a practice. People have been doing that for years. That's why the storm drains are clogged up the way they are. At least one of the reasons, one of the reasons. So having, you talk about outreach. Talk about what you've already done and what you have in place because you've got a, a rock star of a personnel that's doing a great job.
Right. I will say Mrs. Flint has done a great job with us over the past year. She has been out to schools, um, all types of organizational meetings, uh, just many outreach.
And what's the benefit of that?
Well, the benefit is education, Mr. Chairman. You know, citizens come to us and they'll, they'll call my office and they'll say, you know, I'm paying this stormwater utility, what is it, what is it for? They really have no idea. Having Mrs. Flint onboard has given us the opportunity to go out and explain to people, here is where your tax dollars... here is where your tax dollars are going. Here is the return on your investment that you're making in the community. And I think it, it has just gone a long way in reducing the quote-unquote, you know, some of the concerns that I get from Rockdale County citizens.
Well, we've got a long way to go. We didn't get here overnight and we've got a long way to go. She's only been on board maybe about a year now. We've still got a lot of work ahead of us in terms of educating people about the importance of stormwater management and how that not just the fee, but what it really, how it impacts the community. And we have those down, torrential downpours and rains. You talked about the excessive flooding on our roadways and streets. That's due to the fact that long before me, long before this board was in place, there was a lot of boards that just didn't address these issues the way they're needing to be addressed now. And they're gonna continue to need to be addressed or we'll all be floating around here in Rockdale County.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
All right, continue on.
Some of our challenges, and, and, and we have a few, but really not too many. I've already touched on funding. I'm not gonna, not gonna beat that, that dead horse. We want to ensure that our county ordinances are in compliance with the metro Atlanta area ordinances. That is something that is al, always important to sure, to ensure that we are able to hold our developers and, and people accountable in regards to following local rules and regulations. Orness enforcement, as we talked about, that goes back to our developers also. With the amount of development we're having, we want to ensure that, you know, all of the people who want to live in Rockdale County, that they come. And when they purchase their real estate, that their stormwater infrastructure is A-one and they don't have sinkholes showing up in their yard or roadway issues with collapsed pipes or bad joints or anything like that. So that's very important, enforcing the ordinances. Also managing customer expectations, but that goes back to outreach and letting them know what our true scope is, what we are able to handle, and what we would consider a private issue. I think we make great strides in educating citizens on exactly what stormwater management deals with and the issues that we are truly responsible for. Staffing is also another area, but I will say I've, we've been working very closely with talent management and we really don't have staffing challenges per se, but I will say we also want to be able to get in qualified people. You know, and in order to get in qualified people, you, you know, with, with the job market here in metro Atlanta, you know, we, we compete against City of Atlanta, Gwinnett, DeKalb, Cobb in regards to salaries that, that these people want to, to have coming in. So that is one of our challenges. Moving on to some of our twenty-twenty-five fiscal year goals and initiatives. Orness updates, which I've tou, touched on. We are the first stop in regards to the land disturbance process for development. So before you're breaking ground, you're gonna come see me or my staff and we're gonna ensure that your infrastructure is adequate, your detention facilities are adequate, that your erosion sediment control measures that you have to install before you break ground are adequate and that they do not have you harming the environment while you're developing here in Rockdale County. I've touched on equity, improving the stormwater utility rate system. Also innovation. Innovation is a big part of what we're trying to bring to stormwater management. You know, back in the day, when you talk about pipes, all people knew was, let's go in, dig this pipe out, block this road for who knows how long, you know, replace the pipe, and then open everything back up. I'm big on not inconveniencing citizens. You know, we all have places we're trying to go. And who wants to go and have to deal with a blocked road or D-two when they're try, D-two when they're trying to get somewhere? Embracing shotcrete and chemical lining has been a major, major plus for stormwater management in reducing the interruptions to the traveling public that you do have sometimes.
What is shotcrete?
What is shotcrete? Well, I'm glad you asked. Shotcrete is a method of applying concrete to a high-pressure hose in layman's terms for the repair or reinforcement of infrastructure. Chemical lining also reinforces infrastructure, but it does that through the insertion of a, basically a resin, a, a collar, so to speak, into pipes that is then heated with high-pressure steam. And it basically gives you a reinforced pipe system. Doing things this way, we don't have to deal with disturbing utilities. We don't have to worry about conflicts with sewer lines, electrical, fiber optic. Those can be major issues when you're digging up, trying to dig around gas lines. Nobody wants free barbecues when people hit gas lines because those can be very dangerous, dangerous situations. So using these methodologies prevents us from doing that. Just being.
Oh, free barbecues. Can we go back there?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Those are barbecues you don't want to go to. Trust me. Okay, our operating budget. Going back to saying yes. We, we've been blessed really to have a, a budget and we have done our best to stretch taxpayers' dollars here with our operating budget. One thing that, that I feel we, we are in need of is to sort of augment our staff with professional services. That goes back to our inspections process. If we, if we don't have a body in the position and we're working with talent management to find them, the job still has to be done. And so through that, we will augment our staff with professional services. People wear boots on the ground. They're out here on these developments, ensuring that the erosion and sediment control, the stormwater infrastructure, the detention ponds are put in and maintained according to plan. That is the reason for this staff augmentation. Some of the other issues we have request-wise, I touched on professional services. We have our building rentals. We have our wonderful facility over at eleven nineteen West Avenue. I would advise citizens, if you really want to know about stormwater and you haven't talked to Mrs. Flint, drop by. We'd be glad to show you what we do on a day-to-day basis and where your stormwater fees are going. Rental of equipment. There are times when we need specialized equipment for our in-house crews to perform work. That's where those costs come in. Repair and maintenance costs. We have a VAC truck that is currently working. We've had some minor issues with it, but we are working to make sure that we get everything we can out of that VAC truck before we end up replacing it.
Wait a minute now. Wait a minute, Director. Are you talking about the same VAC truck I've been acquiring about?
The very same VAC truck.
Then let me take it from here. Let me take it because you were real nice. In fact, you, you were beyond modest. You said we've had a, a few issues with it. Just tell it like it is. The truck is worn out. We spent a lot of money on maintenance and repair. It's time for that truck to go. It's on a ventilator and we've been patching it up and keeping it, blah, blah, blah.
Yes, sir.
It's time for, particularly the new board coming in in January, they need to make a decision. I think what you need to be doing is talk about the, how essential that VAC truck is to your operation and the fact that you need a new one.
Yes.
Okay? It's a four-hundred-thousand-dollar-plus piece of equipment that has been a complete headache from day one. This, sometimes you can go buy a new vehicle and it could be a lemon from the day you buy it. And I think that's what we ended up with this one. If I'm not mistaken, this was a twenty-eleven, I'm not sure. What's the year on it, Chief?
Twenty-eighteen.
Twenty-eighteen, but it's, it's been a twenty-eighteen nightmare because it's been in and out of the shop and in and out of shop. When we spend that kind of money on maintenance and repair of a piece of equipment of that size, it's in our best interest long-term to look at how we can salvage that vehicle, get whatever return we can get on it and invest in getting a new vehicle. You've done a great job doing piecemeal in a way.
Yes, sir.
But going forward, the last thing anybody in metro Atlanta, particularly a utility need, is a truck that's not, a vehicle that's not dependable. You've gotta have dependable transportation and in order to perform the work at the level that these, that our citizens demand.
Yes, sir.
You've gotta have the right tools and resources to be able to get the work done. So now that I've said what you, you didn't say, say what you need to say.
We will be looking at ways to replace that VAC truck, but one other piece of information that, that I'm going to touch on. We have acquired and we are waiting our new sweeper truck. And so for, for the citizens out here that are listening, VAC trucks basically, as the chairman mentioned earlier, you blowing all of this debris into the ditch, into the curb, into the street. It ends up being transported by that rainwater into the pipe system. Thus, our VAC truck is what we would use to come out to blow out the pipe, vacuum out the catch basin that all this debris has been poured into. Our sweeper truck is something that we're going to be implementing sweeping county streets.
Can we go back to the VAC truck?
Okay.
I don't understand why we don't have, like, it wasn't under warranty. A two thousand eighteen piece of equipment should have had warranties which would have minimized the repair for it because if you buy a two thousand eighteen vehicle, you have the option to purchase a warranty. So why wasn't it?
And, and that is very true. There, there were many warranty repairs that were made. It was determined that with that truck, it was a design flaw in that truck that we have a belt. There's a belt that turns one of the pumps on the truck and that belt constantly breaks. And we've sent that truck back multiple times down to Florida to get it looked at.
Using the warranty that came with it.
Using the warranty. Yes, yes, Madam Commissioner.
I think what the Commissioner is saying is she's spot on. Any new vehicle comes with a warranty.
Yes.
And if there's a, a repair and maintenance issue that needs to be addressed that's covered under that warranty, then of course you want to utilize that warranty to get it taken care of without having to use any extra funds. We've done that. We did that repeatedly until we went beyond the mileage and the time of the warranty. Every warranty is based upon mileage and the life of the vehicle. So once you've extended it or gone beyond the warranty, you're outside of the warranty, then you gotta pay for it, just like the vehicle you own that you're, you know, at home. You know, once you extend that warranty either over time or mileage or a combination of both, then you got, you got out-of-pocket expenses.
So are we looking at a different company? Because what I don't, if we purchased a new ve, a new VAC truck in twenty-eighteen and it had all these problems, I don't see how purchasing a new, the exact same thing is gonna eliminate the problem.
Well, the one thing about it, and that's a very, that's a great point, is that they have different models. They have different manufacturers. And so we've already done our research. We have talked to our staff members who are on this truck every day, who have a thorough in-depth knowledge of these trucks. So moving forward, we would know what type, what size, what brands have been most reliable just by talking to other professionals in the industry, including our staff, to know that the next one we get, we will not have all of these issues that we have been having with, with it. But also our, our sweeper truck that we're in the process of acquiring, it also has a suction hose on it. So it will actually be able to kind of lighten up the load on our VAC truck some, just enough for us to get a little more usage on it because I, I just did not want to take a loss, quote-unquote, on that truck. So we've just been trying to manage it. If we can manage that thing for a couple more years, get some use out of it, then, you know, the county doesn't take a loss on, on what they've invested.
Thank you, Director. I want to add one other piece to this because I want to caution us about how much we promote or advertise the use and the work of the VAC truck as well as the sweeper vehicle that you talked about. Because with the number of local residents who don't understand and they've been continuing a practice for many, many years of taking their blower, their yard lawn blower, leaf blower, and blowing the debris from the yard waste or what have you into the drainage system. People have been doing that for many, many years. They never understood after a period of time it clogs up our system. If they think, oh, it's no big deal. The county can come through with the VAC truck and just suck it out of it. The county can come through with the sweeper truck. We don't want to make people comfortable thinking it's okay to do that because the county is gonna come and suction it out anyway. Well, we're doing the maintenance. That's a part of the, the purpose of having the vehicle is to perform that frequent or ever-so-after maintenance. But we still need the residents to know it's not okay to take your yard debris and waste and blow it into the drain, the storm drain or the culvert. That's the work that Ms. Flint is, part of the work that she's doing, and she's doing a great job moving throughout the county, trying to get that mess out. But she's just one person. We all need to be saying that and reminding folks that it's not okay to take your leaf blower and just blow all that yard waste and debris into the culvert because it's a big, big job. If we make them think, oh, we've got a VAC truck or we have a sweeper truck that just gonna come along and sweep it up, it makes people feel comfortable. It's almost the same argument that I get from Mr. Corey Brown and Community Improvement. They go pick up a mattress from the side of the road and next two weeks, there's another mattress back out there. Because folks think, oh, the county is gonna come pick this up and they just throw it out there any kind of way. That's, that can become a problem. So we've got to be very careful as to how we talk about some of the services and the nature of the services that we provide because we don't want people to get comfortable just doing the negligent thing of, of the improper thing, should I say.
Well, and I think you have to understand that if they're doing these kinds of things, we're spending money that we wouldn't have to if they were just following a few simple rules. And, you know.
Very true. And it all goes back to outreach. We have been out educating. So, you know, and we just have to get the word out and ensure that not only that citizens know proper procedure, but that they're also willing to follow it.
So in the interim, or in the meantime, should I say, we need the VAC truck. We need the sweeper. We need Ms. Flint to continue to educate because there's more people who may not be, for whatever reason, privy to this information or aware. I, I, I think the gentleman that I saw the other day taking his leaf blower, he was innocently, in his mind, innocently, just because he's probably done it a million times. He didn't think, oh, oh, my God, I'm clogging up the system. He was clearing, he was clearing his yard. He was making his yard look good and getting the excess debris off of his lawn after he, and it was a good-looking lawn, by the way. But he was taking all the yard waste and debris and putting it in the storm drain, which was causing, he had a good-looking yard, but when his house starts floating, he gonna wonder why.
Did, did you stop?
No, I didn't. Everything is about timing. I knew it was not the time to stop and say anything. That man had a good-looking yard. He didn't want to hear anything from me. I was minding my business. I kept going. I saw it and kept it moving. Absolutely. I didn't even.
I was just wondering.
So, so that brings up another issue of what do people do with their clippings and their branches? You know, living in the city, we have a place on the street and the city comes by and picks it up. But that is not true.
In the county.
In the county.
Right.
So, you know.
Well, I will give credit.
Not to get off, off topic.
Not only get too off-topic, but one of the benefits of being a Rockdale County resident, there's multiple, but one of them is the fact that we do have our recycling center on Segmond Road. And there are a good number of citizens who utilize and take advantage of that service of being able to bring household products, yard debris, and other items over to the recycling center to properly dispose of those white items and yard waste. So we, we, there's a lot of, folks, if you, on a Saturday morning, there's a lot of vehicles trying to turn into the recycling center on, on Segmond Road. So there's a lot of folks who are doing the right thing. Please understand. But then there's a good number of folks, as the Commissioner mentioned, that don't even know that the recycling center is over there and it's been there for many, many years, or they may know it but not interested in taking the time to load up a truck or what have you and go over there and just properly dispose. We've got to continue our efforts in the area of education and information.
And another piece of that education is compost.
Yes.
And mulching.
Yes.
Because you're, you read all the time that you're, really, your lawn clippings should stay on your lawn to, to help improve the lawn and, and mulch it and fertilize it.
True.
Stormwater management.
Stormwater management. So let's move on and just talk briefly about my current organization chart. Right now in my department, I have approximately forty-seven employees. I have two deputy directors. I have one deputy director that handles my administration, my employee development, all of my accounting, my stormwater utility, utility billing aspects. I have my other director that handles my operations, my project management, my field crew, my inspections, the land disturbance process and plan review process. my field crew, my inspections, the land disturbance process and plan review process. And, and it trickles down from there. I have a great organization. I have a great setup and I think we have made.
And as a director of the department with those two deputy directors, what do you do?
I manage those directors, but I'm also inspecting what I expect. Is in, I have to get out and go and, and just pop up. Pop up on my house crew, see how things are going on on the job, you know, and, and I'll go out on the job in my suit, in my loafers. It doesn't matter. But I'm out there, boots on the ground, making sure that what we've been tasked to do is being done.
And we certainly do appreciate that director, but I want to point out, as you did a great job articulating the two deputy directors and their roles and responsibilities.
Mm-hmm.
As the director of the department, your job is to oversee the overall operations of the department, work with the VOC, the executive staff, with all high-level projects and engineering matters that impact stormwater management. Is that not correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I need you to say that.
Yes, sir.
So, people, because somebody was out there listening and watching and when you articulated the roles of your two deputies, they was asking what I said. What do you do? Okay, you, you remember that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, let's keep it moving.
Will do. Let's move on to our capital improvement plan. Some of my major expenditures over the next five years will be in, in, in a couple of different areas. Automotive equipment for two thousand twenty-five, which that is the, the sweeping truck that I mentioned. Our stormwater master plan update that I've touched on briefly. One of the biggest pieces of my operation is the stormwater projects in construction. As the chairman has mentioned, addressing forty-plus years of neglect of stormwater infrastructure is not an overnight thing, but we have made major strides. And it, and we are seeing the benefits in reduced calls on road washouts, reduced calls on sinkholes and, and issues that negatively impact community. The stormwater projects in construction is very important. And the fact that we're out here, boots on the ground, getting the work done and fixing the issues that we have in this community. Pond maintenance is very important and it is going to be an increasingly hot topic in coming years. And you ask, what ponds? What are we talking about? Fishing ponds or what? No, we're not talking about fishing ponds. We're talking about detention ponds and retention ponds. These ponds are vital in ensuring the, the upkeep and the stability of our ecosystem and water quality within Rockdale County. With these impervious surfaces, your streets, your sidewalks, you know, a lot of times you can have pollutants as rain falls and the rain transports these pollutants. Well, if these pollutants were transported just directly to creeks and rivers, it can have negative impacts on the ecology, the fish and wildlife, things of that nature. These pond service areas where that runoff can collect, slow down pollutants and, and soil and, and things settle out of this water before it is then released into our local rivers and creeks, thus preserving and, and improving the water quality within Rockdale County. Those are my major areas of expenditure. They are constant. That is, that's what we have in stormwater management. In closing, I just want to thank you for the time to be able to come up and talk to you about our budget. We've made great strides, but there's always room for improvement and we will keep marching forward to improve the quality of life for these Rockdale citizens here.
Commissioner Washington, any questions for the director?
No.
Commissioner Williams?
No.
Thank you. Let's give Director Simpkins a round of applause. Great job, Director. Keep up the good work.
Yes, sir.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Who's up next?
We have our district attorney here. Thank you.
All right. Madam DA?
Yes.
Good to have you this morning.
Good morning.
Sure. Twelve. Well, good morning, everyone. It is my pleasure to stand before you, the VOC, in presentation of this two thousand twenty-five budget request on behalf of the District Attorney's Office. But before I do so, I would be remiss not to take a moment of personal privilege to thank each one of you, Chairman Esbit, Commissioner Williams, Commissioner Washington, for what has been your support over the duration of my tenure here as DA for almost seven years, okay? I think the first three years that, that I started, I kept asking for more space. And you listened and with reason, you were able to provide us with space to allow for our office to work effectively, efficiently, so that we are no longer housing three attorneys or three victim witness advocates in one space in our courtroom location. So, you also were able to fill in gaps for what was a woefully under-resourced DA's office when I first took office. And having been a prosecutor here in Rockdale County for eighteen years, my duration and tenure as an ADA before that. And so, I thank you for listening, for taking the time to be able to recognize the value and importance of this DA's office, not just in your words but in your deeds. So, thank you for that. And my gratitude is irrespective of your decision regarding our two thousand twenty-five budget request.
Well, thank you.
Thank you truly from the bottom of my heart.
But it was a good thing to put it first, you know, before you started presenting.
I just want to get that out the way right now, okay? So, with that being said, allow me to present to some and introduce to others the vision, mission and values of your Rockdale County DA's office. Now, when I think about vision, I'm thinking about where we are going as a DA's office. What's the big picture overall plan? The mission is what have we been called to do as a DA's office here in Rockdale County? And our values reflect how we are going to govern ourselves as an office and through policy and also as employees of DA's office along the way in fulfillment of this vision and our mission. The vision of the DA's office is to improve the quality of life in Rockdale County, uphold and restore the public's trust in the criminal justice system, engage and collaborate with the community, be leaders in ethical prosecution and implement innovative and alternative strategies to hold the accused accountable to deter future criminal conduct. It is our mission to enhance the safety of Rockdale County through the fervent and equitable prosecution of misdemeanor and felony crimes here in Rockdale County. We will protect victims and their rights, hold the accused accountable in a manner that best prevents future criminal conduct and provide opportunities for criminal partner, for community partnership in the pursuit of justice. We value professionalism, respect, opportunity, unity and dependability. Now, I know when people, you know, are, are presenting these budgets, it's like, okay, just get down to the dollars and cents of what you want, right? However, I do believe that in order to provide the proper context for my budget request, it is crucial for me to, to give an overview of your DA's office and the work that we do in accordance with the laws of the state of Georgia and on behalf of the people of Rockdale County. Because what I have come to learn in my almost eighteen years of working here in Rockdale as a prosecutor, which is inclusive of my almost seven years as DA, is that very few people really know what we as your DA's office truly do. And so, I can't presume that everyone understands the context. And without that context, the dollars just won't make sense. So, our first function is that criminal prosecution element, right? So, we represent the state of Georgia in the handling of all felony and misdemeanor crimes here in Rockdale County. We are a unique office in that in Metro Atlanta, you traditionally have a DA's office that handles all your felony and any corresponding or related misdemeanors. And then you have your Solicitor General's Office that will handle strictly misdemeanor crimes. Here in Rockdale County, we are one-stop shop in your DA's office. So, we literally handle all misdemeanors, including misdemeanor traffic offenses and all felonies. So, we go from your speeding to your murder.
And, and Madam DA, I'm so glad we've heard, we know that and we've heard you say that several times. And one of the things I've been doing throughout this budget process is trying to make sure that every, or as many as windows of opportunities of education.
Absolutely.
Very much like what you just did, but I want you to go back just a little bit, explain, slow it down for folks to really let that marinate on the fact that here in Rockdale County, the DA's office handled all of it versus in some municipalities and counties, they have a Solicitor General who takes some of that load, a good bit of that load off. Go back to that because I don't want people to glaze over that and miss it.
Thank you for the opportunity. So, when you look at DeKalb County, Henry County, Gwinnett County, Cobb County, Fulton County, Douglas County, and you go and you see what their criminal justice system reflects, there are two different offices that handle crimes that take place within their jurisdiction. The Solicitor General's Office in those metro counties, they handle all misdemeanor crimes. That means your traffic speeding, your DUIs, your family violence batteries, your theft, your first or second theft in Walmart or Home Depot. They handle all of those type of criminal trespass cases that there's a damage to a, to a property under five hundred dollars or someone's on someone's property or they're loitering and prowling. They handle those misdemeanor sort of quality of life type crimes and, and family violence crimes as well and DUIs, okay? Then in your DA's offices, they handle what will be your felony offenses. A felony crime is something that by law, a person can be punished by at least one year in custody or probation and more, including life, okay? So, traditionally, your DA's office will handle your more severe crimes, your more violent offenses and that nature. But here in Rockdale County, we in your DA's office, we handle all of it. And while we do have these.
Why is that?
That's, that's, I think that's a function of how small we were. We're not there anymore, but how small we were.
Say that.
We're not as small as we were, but we have grown tremendously. But initially, when we, as, as a circuit, we were initially a part of the Stone Mountain Circuit, right? Which was DeKalb County and Rockdale County. Back, and I believe it was nineteen eighty, we became our own circuit by way of, of splitting from Stone Mountain and becoming the Rockdale Judicial Circuit. So, we are a one-county circuit here in Metro Atlanta. And, and as a way of being able, I think, to have everything stay right here in Rockdale. Say, oh, we'll take on all the misdemeanors. But we grew so much, they then said, okay, we have a Superior Court judge who by law is able to handle all misdemeanor and all felony crimes. But because the case though got so big, there was a push for, let's say, to give us then a state court. And state court is where you handle all of your misdemeanor crimes. So, here in Rockdale, we now have, as you all know, two state court judges, right, or judgeships. And we also have two Superior Court judgeships. So, the state court judges, they handle those misdemeanor crimes and our felony crimes are handled by our Superior Court judges.
So, Madam DA, great question, Commissioner. Very good question as to why isn't it? And you did a great job giving the history and the backdrop. What could change that? Who has the authority to change that? What makes that? What could bring you a Solicitor General?
Well, that would be, I believe, by local legislation, by the local body getting together and saying, we have, we have maxed out what we can do in one office and now we need to go ahead and pay for, because it's going to be a cost to that. It's going to be another elected Solicitor General, right, who would then take on all the misdemeanor crimes and then the felonies would still remain in your DA's office.
And if you had that, what would it do for you?
Well, it would, it would be a huge relief, quite frankly, because a lot of our crimes you will see are predominantly misdemeanors. There's a lot of volume with your misdemeanors as opposed to in felony world, the cases are bigger because they're more severe and there's a lot more involved with the investigation and the, and the prosecution of those crimes. But the volume in your state court is much bigger.
What about the efficiency of the process of being able to?
Let me, let me touch on that as well because if you look at other circuits where they, because there are circuits who do not have a state court judge in their own, but they do have a DA's office who prosecute misdemeanors.
Madam DA, stay with that mic. I don't want nobody to miss. They're listening, they're listening to everything you said. They're taking it all in.
Yes, absolutely. So, so when you have a circuit where there is not a state court in their circuit, but it's only a Superior Court judge who has by law the authority to handle and dispose of all felony and misdemeanors, what tends to happen in those circuits is that your misdemeanor crimes tend to lag much longer, okay? Those crimes tend to become sort of, they fall sort of further behind procedurally because you're trying to handle your child molester, right? The office is trying to focus on the more violent offenders, the ones who are in custody, right, and trying to move those kids along. So, your, your traditional misdemeanors may not get handled as quickly because they are not prioritizing that same way. But there is a real cost to this separation, having a Solicitor's Office and a DA's Office. That's a very real, real cost to be able to outfit an entirely new office with new attorneys and new legal assistants and new investigators. So, there's a real dollar amount associated with having a separate Solicitor's Office versus a separate DA's Office in a circuit. But we do have two state court judges and two Superior Courts to be able to handle the crimes in their respective jurisdictions.
But are we there yet? I mean, because one of the questions at a debate was, you know, the, the load from the judge's perspective. And the judges feel as if they are able to handle the load. They're not at the workload. So, all of them feel as if they are there. So, I'm wondering.
They are not there, you're saying?
Right. We are not at a level where, where they feel overworked or that there needs to be an expansion or a decrease. So, I'm wondering from the prosecutorial viewpoint, are we at a point where we need to start? Because even if we started this idea today, it's going to take us some time to get everything in place. Are we there where we need to start looking and advocating? Or do you think that we can hold off for a while? I mean, what I would like to see happen in this county is that we start planning for the future. And that's one of the things that I don't, that in my experience, we haven't done a good job of. So, if you think we need to start planning for a Solicitor now, then it seems like we would start doing that now. Or if you think that we're good where we are for a few years before we start? So, I just want to know from a prosecutorial standpoint.
To be clear, it was not my ask or, or desire to go down the road of we need to have a Solicitor's Office.
Right, we got, we understand.
Right, okay. I want to make sure that's clear. So, that is not where I am. However, we have been able to allocate our attorney resources effectively to be able to have those who are your younger, newer attorneys handling our misdemeanor crimes, get their feet wet, learn, right, how to handle prosecution and then have our other senior attorneys handle Superior Court felony crimes. So, we've been able to be effective in our DA's office. There's always a need though, and be clear, there is a need that we still have to be able to do so effectively, but I do not believe we are there just yet.
Yeah, and, and thank you for, thank you, Commissioner. Thank you for clearing it up, Madam DA. We're going to move forward with your presentation. It was I that was asking about distinguishing and educating the difference between the DA's office, working all of the incidents here in Rockdale County completely versus those other counties and municipalities that do have the luxury of having a Solicitor General whereas they can carry and share that load. You don't have that luxury. Also, it was I that talked about the fact that we are still somewhat working in the days of the past where we operate. I think future forward-thinking and future planning is, there's never anything wrong with that, but you were not advocating for that. You were talking about making the best use of the resources that you have, but you're also talking about some of the growth that we're experiencing in this county does have an impact on your day-to-day workload.
Absolutely does. Absolutely does.
We'll, we'll move forward. Education piece is always important, but I don't want it to be confused.
Right. Thank you so much. And, and I do think, and just add one more thing to that. What, what separates us from those DA's offices that do not have a Solicitor's Office is that we do have state court judges.
Right.
So, that allows for the work to continue on as opposed to lag if we only had Superior Court judges, okay? So, in our, in our role as, as a criminal prosecution, you know, most people know that when it comes to law enforcement, their job is to respond to the crime, stop the crime, make an arrest, right? But do you know what happens after the arrest? That case, the offender's case, will then come to my office. And we go about and do the work of, of evaluating to determine the legal viability of the charges and ultimately how and/or if the person arrested should be held accountable based upon the evidence that we receive from the officers, okay? Our role also involves case management. That is making sure that we efficiently manage and process thousands of cases annually. And I'll get to our numbers later. We annually process thousands of cases. And by processing these cases, what I'm referring to is that nuanced, behind-the-scenes procedural steps of taking a case from arrest to disposition to the closure, right? It includes the opening of the files. It includes the investigative, further investigation of the trial, the trial cases to make sure we have what we need to be effective and also the charging decisions of the case to each court date. We provide legal guidance to our local law enforcement agencies, City of Conyers and the Rockdale County Sheriff's Office. And I think it's probably a, a less known sort of role that is provided and given to us by statutes under title fifteen, section eight, subsection six. It indicates that the District Attorney's Office's role is to advise local law enforcement. So, before a case even gets arrested, we are receiving calls, you know, from law enforcement and say, is this okay? What do you think about this? To be able to make sure we are working together as the criminal justice system and as law enforcement and prosecution, prosecutors, that we are doing what we need to do legally and are doing so effectively. In addition, we provide victim support, which is, as you put, the. In addition, we provide victim support, which is, we put, the comprehensive services to crime victims, which includes notification of court appearances, counseling and support referral, and also court accompaniment. Now, within a couple of days after our victims have, have been dealing with the arrest of an offender, our advocates are reaching out to them on the weekends and nighttime to be able to provide necessary information and support to these victims of crime. We are informing them of the bond hearings and also giving them resources to be able to, to provide the support they need in this difficult time that they have encountered. And this support even sometimes continues after a case has been disposed of because that is the nature of the work that we do as victim advocates. Also, we also deal with, in my office, prevention and intervention. This is the implementation of enrichment programs to educate the youth on impacts of crime to prevent and deter criminal behavior. Now, this, this component is a, is near and dear to my heart. It is one that I have taken on in my tenure to make sure that we are doing the work of prevention. I do not believe we can have a conversation about prosecution without having a conversation about prevention. Because ultimately, it is our youth who are being homegrown right here in our community. And what are we doing to be preemptive in our public safety? If we are not able to do initiatives and work from, from the DA's Office that pour into the, the uplift and building of our youth.
Well, we certainly appreciate the work you've done with our Parks and Recreation and all of our public relation teams. You're definitely all over the community. Particularly, one comes to mind, they just made mention of it yesterday from Parks and Rec, there's Hoops After Dark.
Yes.
You've been present on that one, and, and also participated in Judge Attent's summer law camp that she does as well. So the DA's Offices is without a doubt, working in the area of the space of prevention and trying to educate our youth. You're absolutely right, and I appreciate that passion about you, not for focusing solely on the prosecution part of it, but the preventive measures and trying to deter folks from having to even come through your system. It is what it is, but your passion speaks very loud, I want to make sure I pointed that out. But we, we see it very clearly, and I don't know whether there's too many other counties that can really boast they have an active hands-on DA who is really in the community from a proactive and preventive standpoint. A lot of folks are only concerned about the work that they're tasked to do, and that's to prosecute and push the law. But if we can find our passions and be able to be out there with the public, particularly our youth, and deter them in an alternative way that's positive, that's a plus right there. That saves the whole community.
Absolutely.
So we thank you for that.
And we're saving dollars because that Hoops, that Hoops program, which is a part of our Yale Youth Intervention, Enrichment and Learning by Design initiative through my office, it is actually grant-funded by the CJCC Criminal Justice Coordinating Council. So we're able to partner with Parks and Rec utilizing the facilities, but the funding does come through our grant resources. And we're able to be smart about it and be able to still provide the necessary support to our youth to be preventative oriented.
Well, I had to point it out because oftentimes when you have such good people who are pouring out beyond the call of duty, sometimes the community can take that for granted. They can become comfortable and used to having those individuals, and they think it's just what's supposed to happen. And the truth of the matter, that's not, it, it doesn't happen in other places. So when we find people who have a passion to their calling, who are willing to go above and beyond, we need to call it out, spotlight it, and so we, we're very appreciative. Rockdale is lucky to have you and work through your office, though.
Thank you, Chairman, thank you so much. Next slide, please. So the impact of our role is felt in numerous areas, and that includes public safety. Now, the DA's Office, we are instrumental in keeping the community safe by prosecuting offenders, which ultimately leads to a deterrence of crime, right? And if we do not do our job effectively, the community will know it. And if we do not do our work whereby we say, for example, oh, we can't prosecute entering autos because we just don't have the time or the resources or the people to be able to push those crimes forward, and we got to focus on other things. What do you think will happen when it comes to entering auto in our community? It's going to increase. And so we can't afford not to do our work because our work is directly linked to public safety, it's directly linked to the quality of life that we have here in Rockdale County when it comes to enjoying our music festivals, when it comes to enjoying our fall festivals and being able to go to the movies and feel safe to do so, to be able to go to our parks and feel safe to do so. So the work that we do is instrumental in keeping Arato County safe. Also, the work that we do impacts our victim support and advocacy because we are able to provide, as I mentioned before, the essential support and representation of victims of crime to ensure that their voices are heard and elevated. Because our victims are the cornerstone of the work that we do. If we are unable to support them and elevate their voices and have their needs met and heard, then we are not doing our job effectively as well. We also, our impact also involves the integrity of the criminal justice system, which is also really true to my heart. This office is the one that ensures that justice is served through the fair and equitable prosecution of crimes. And there's no, you know, secret that, that this work that we do, you cannot make everyone happy. The very nature of this work means that there is going to be someone who may not get what they want, or who may not like what you did because of the nature of having to prosecute crimes. But even with that being said, there is always a way to do so where the integrity and fairness, equity of this system is protected and maintained. I remember there was a trial that I had involving an armed robbery, and when the, when the verdict returned from the jury, the defendant was found guilty. And that's, he was given the opportunity to be able to say words to, in mitigation to the court. He thanked his attorney, he thanked his mother, and then he turned, he said, do not want to thank the prosecutor for being fair. That's what it's all about. It's about making sure when people come into Rockdale County and they are encountering the DA's Office and our criminal justice system, they may not get what they want, but they do know they're going to be treated fairly and with equity. We also maintain the community's trust by holding offenders accountable and being able to ensure that when a crime takes place, there is a consequence. You know, I'm a mother of four, as many of you know, four young children. And if I, if the rule in my, in my house was don't eat cookies, and they ate a cookie and there was no consequence, what's going to happen? They're going to keep eating cookies, right? On the flip side, if they ate a cookie and that was against the rule, and they knew there was going to be a consequence, they're not going to eat a cookie. That's our role, you know, big picture, is making sure that we deter by holding people's feet to the fire and, and there are real consequences to actions. Not the next slide, but I want to come back to, to the subsequent slide, if you don't mind. I'm going to come back to that, I want to put something in context. So our office structure, it, it involves fifteen District Attorneys. We currently have two vacancies, we have nine investigators, as well as six victim advocates. We have, in, in my seven years, we have increased that from two to six. Because over the course of the time that I've been DA, there have been amendments to the Constitution that required victims to be notified at every, at every level of court appearances. And so we had to be able to meet the needs of not just the law, but the Constitution, and that is the Marcy's Law, to make sure that we are affording our victims the appropriate information and notifications. And we increased and were able to have more victim advocates added to our staff. We also have ten support staff members, that includes our office managers, receptionists, file clerk investigative, investigative support staff, as well as our three legal assistants. Now, we represent, next slide, please, the state of Georgia and the people of Rockdale County in the following criminal courts. Magistrate Court, Juvenile Court, as I mentioned before, we have our two state courts that handle strictly misdemeanors and traffic offenses, as well as our two Superior Courts. What is also not known is that we also represent the state of Georgia in, in matters affecting Rockdale County, in our Court of Appeals of Georgia and the Supreme Court of Georgia. So we handle all the post-conviction, post-appellate, appellate issues that happen here in Rockdale County. That's real time, that's real labor, that again, in the education component, everyone needs to understand exactly where our hands are felt through the court system here locally in Rockdale County and also across the state of Georgia. Next slide, please. Oh, I'm sorry, if you can go back to the operating budget, when I'm, I want to address that first. Thank you so much, I know I'm going back and forth. So as it pertains to our operating budget summary, because we are asking for two new positions, and I'll get to that. But I do want to talk about this budget increase because as you can see, from an operating expense perspective, our change from twenty-four to this year is, is twenty-four hundred dollars. And, and that's really more so based on having new leadership and, and their need for certain types of training and certifications that they have to go to. That's the real change there for operating expenses. And I think that's a reflection of us being intentional about how we use even the most basic thing as postage, right? How do we send out subpoenas via mail? And even though it may seem innocuous, every little bit counts. But we are intentional about the, the work that we do when it comes to our, our usage of resources in that manner. The biggest leap that you will see involves our personnel services and benefits. And that is inclusive of what will be, what is my request for this twenty-twenty-five year. But it's also reflective of the increase from the county that took place, and that was very much so appreciated by the members of my office. And it's also reflected of a real need that I think is, is not, not I think, that is not discussed regarding where we are as a criminal justice system, and particularly your prosecution offices. So over the course of, of twenty years that I've been doing this work, from intern all the way through to now, in the beginning, twenty years ago, it used to be a badge of honor to work in a DA's Office. There was a time when everyone wanted to be able to work in a DA's Office, to be able to get experience, to be able to help people. It was a place to go to be able to come out of law school and know you were going to get training, know that you were going to be a part of something good. And for reasons that I'm not saying are wrong, that narrative has since shifted. And so we are in a real crisis that is being addressed nationally and locally regarding our retention and the, and our ability to attract talent to DA's Offices across the state and nationally, as I mentioned. So much so that there have been surveys done to, to get a gauge as to what can we do and what is happening. Not just why people are leaving, but what can we do to get them to stay, and what makes a person stay. Now, Rockdale has been blessed in that we have attorneys who have worked in this office for upwards, attorneys who have worked in the office for upwards of thirty years or twenty-five plus years. And, and what's reflected in what was the National District Attorney's Association Prosecutor Retention Survey, which came out just in June twenty-twenty-four. What is reflected in our office and what has been reflected in the survey, again, both nationally and in Georgia, is that the people who come to do this work do it because they feel called to do the work. That is not necessarily about, you know, the accolades or, or the, or the money necessarily. But it's about what can we do to help people? And that what keeps them is that we're doing good work and that we're helping people. But if they were asked, what, what is making you think about leaving? It comes down to money. It comes down to the inability to be able to make ends meet, to be able to pay student loans, to be able to have equality of life when it comes to your retirement account.
Don't forget to use that mic.
I apologize. What it means to be able to have equality of life when it comes to your retirement account even. And those are very real issues, not because I think that's an issue, because it has been documented and quantified across the state and nationally. And so when you look at the increase in that personnel service and benefit line item, I know you see numbers, and numbers, you know, can be outrageous. But again, let's put it in a proper context. We're talking about, one, making sure that the support that we receive in this office from our attorneys, for our attorneys and for even our support staff who are behind the scenes pushing to make sure that those attorneys who are on the front line in the courtrooms and doing that work can have that work done, do have what they need to make the work done that ultimately affects the quality of life here in Rockdale County, the accountability of offenders in this community. And so that increase is certainly reflective of an attempt to be able to demonstrate fiscally the value that we in Rockdale County place on those attorneys, as well as those support staff members who do work here in our office, yes.
So have we, have we done a market study for them recently? And the reason why I ask is because I saw a job posting for the Rockdale County DA's Office for a senior district attorney, and the starting salary for a senior district attorney was like seventy-five. I saw a, we just talked about the difference between a Solicitor, the Solicitor's Office, and what a Solicitor does in, in different jurisdictions. I saw one in a different jurisdiction for a Solicitor that was over a hundred.
Absolutely.
So if you have, so if she's asking for a senior district attorney, those are the people who are going to bed every night after they've just read the discovery, which is the evidence, for a rape, a child molestation, a murder. And we're asking them to just be paying at a senior level seventy-five thousand dollars. And then you're going, where you can go to another jurisdiction-
Across the interstate.
And get paid over a hundred thousand dollars to run traffic? Or misdemeanors? I mean, I'm talking about, what, what, give me a misdemeanor. Every day, and you're going to get paid over a hundred thousand dollars to do that? I don't think that's fair, and, and I don't think that we're going to be able to attract the best people to prosecute the cases that, that are the most, I don't want to say precious, but the ones that bother us the most. So I really think that we need to look at making sure that we are competitive because we want those people that are doing those egregious crimes prosecuted with the, the highest, those people that are called, we want them to, to fill their calling in Rockdale County because we want that expertise, we want that passion, we want that commitment to people in the jurisdiction, in this jurisdiction. And if we have to pay them to do it, I think that we need to do it. But when I saw the disparity between a senior, what we advertised for a senior district attorney and what they were advertising for somebody to run misdemeanors, that, that's almost unconscionable, and I think that that's something we need to start addressing.
Absolutely. And even I can, I can add to that, thank you so much, Commissioner Washington, I can add to that in that depending upon where you go, you can also receive that salary for being a new attorney.
And it wasn't a new attorney.
When you talk about attraction and retention, those are very real numbers. Because while I have done my absolute best to sell the culture of the DA's Office, and I'm very proud of the culture that we cultivate. Now, we are not perfect, but in, in trying to attract and retain, you know, it has been about who we are as the office, who we are as individuals and how we interact. And we do call ourselves our DA Office family, and it's real, it's a very real feeling. But that can only go but so far when you're trying to raise children, when you're trying to put, put, you know, food on the table, you know? And that, that's not just our attorneys, but it also extends to our support staff, our investigators, and our victim advocates as well. But ultimately, I just wanted to address that number because people just see numbers, again, out of context, without really understanding what that number correlates to and the value that it really has to the people who work and do the work that we do in our DA's Office. If you can go to the next slide, please, thank you so much, or the next one.
The next one.
Thank you. So my ask for this, this twenty-five budget year involves two positions. That is first, the Investigative Three position, which is at the seventy-three thousand nine hundred and twenty-seven dollar ninety-eight cents mark, which includes a salary plus forty percent benefits, and also Legal Assistant Two, which comes to fifty-nine thousand seven hundred and three dollars. And these are both going to be new positions. And so the ask there, if you could go to the next slide, too, I want to make sure it's clear as to what these roles entail. So our Investigative Three position, that, that involves the follow-up investigation of criminal cases through coordination with local law enforcement agencies. They locate and interview witnesses, defendants and victims to develop essential evidence for prosecution. They receive evidence and track submissions to crime labs, review and summarize case files, and they also assist in the pre-trial preparation for, for crimes.
She says she can't hear you back there. You got to stay at the mic.
All right, okay, I'll, I'll go right here, how about that? Okay, our Investigative Three, they conduct follow-up investigations of criminal cases through coordination with local law enforcement agencies. They locate and interview witnesses, defendants and victims to develop essential evidence for prosecution. They receive evidence and track submissions to crime labs. They review and summarize case files and assist in the pre-trial preparation for trial. They serve subpoenas and also assist with courthouse security. All of our investigators are post-certified, they are peace officers, in some training, or post-certified law enforcement officers.
And as a quick point of education, you did a great job reading that job description, Madam DA. I do want you to take a quick moment to articulate the difference in the investigators in your office versus those over at the Sheriff's Office, why they are different and what the different roles they serve in terms of the, go through this criminal justice process the way it needs to be.
Absolutely, absolutely. So the investigators over at the Sheriff's Office, for example, they, they are deputized, well, our investigators are also deputized under the Rockdale County Sheriff, okay? So that's where the, the arrest powers come from here in Rockdale County, it's through that, through that avenue. But the investigators, they report directly to the Sheriff's Office over there. Their role is to do the initial retrieval and investigation of crimes that take place. So after a person is either arrested, or when a crime has been reported and they are seeking videos, they're interviewing witnesses at the initial stage of the investigation and criminal process. That's their predominant role, right? But we do work closely and in tandem, as mentioned there, of working with local law enforcement. But as I mentioned to you before, once that case leaves the Sheriff's Office, it comes to our office. And this is no slight, but there are times when we have to fill in the gap, right? And we have to be able to make sure that what has been sent over to our office is viable to be able- And we have to be able to make sure that what has been sent over to our office is viable to be able to present as a trial, as a case for trial. And I'm gonna tell you right now, our jurors are not gonna be satisfied in the hearing. We didn't have time, we didn't have enough people, we didn't have the ability to go back because dot, dot, dot. And so the expectation when it comes to being able to hold offenders accountable for especially your most serious crimes, yes, the standard is beyond a reasonable doubt, but that standard rests on the DA's office to make sure we can provide that. And so even when that is not initially given, we have the, the, the opportunity and we have the, the need to go back and make sure we can do what we can to make it a stronger, more viable case for accountability purposes. And that's the role, you know, of our investigator, Investigators in our office. I just wanna make it clear that back in, I believe it was two thousand and twenty-one, we did make a request for Investigators, and we were able to receive that request because back in two thousand and twenty-one, we had seven Investigators. And my ask then was the first time in fourteen years that there had been an increase in Investigators in the DA's office. And so while we were able to receive four positions for Investigators at that time, we utilized two of those positions to go towards our Victim Witness Assistance Program and for those victim advocates. Because, as I mentioned, there was the change in the Constitution regarding Marcy's Law, and we needed to make sure we could meet the needs as required by law when it, when it came to reaching out to the victims to get the necessary information and support. So we were able to increase from seven to nine back in two thousand and twenty-one. And so here I come before you for two thousand and twenty-five to say the need is still there for our Investigators and that we do need to increase it. And that's my ask for this upcoming budget for that very reason. In addition, we have our Legal Assistant Two position request, which involves our individuals who are, again, behind the scenes. Every, every role in our office is important and integral to making sure we can get the work done that needs to get done to be able to effectuate justice in our criminal justice system. And our Legal Assistants are responsible for typing the charging documents, our accusations, our indictments for state and Superior Court. They also prepare our trial dockets, which, which includes gathering all the cases that we have in our office that are on a particular docket, and also the corresponding files. They prepare the bench warrants for those who do not come to court, as well as the bond forfeiture, subpoenas, and bench warrants set aside by way of the administrative role. They also process and maintain various legal correspondence and paperwork as a part of their role. As it stands right now, we have three Legal Assistants who do this work. Those three are responsible for the two state courts and the, and the two Superior Courts. If you do your math, we're short. And just by way of comparison, I know we can't compare to other circuits, but by way of comparison, even when you go out far, you know, to your Walton Counties and beyond, there is normally a, a two-to-one ratio when it comes to Legal Assistance to Attorneys. So two attorneys to one Legal Assistant, and we are woefully behind that because the work that they do involves the nuanced, day-to-day gathering all the files. And so when we say that there are two state courts and that there are two Superior Courts, that really does not give you a full breadth of understanding when it comes to what they have to put together and compile every single day, every month after month of these cases. And that's the role of our Legal Assistant. And so when they cannot do their job, there is a delay. When we cannot do that efficiently, it directly impacts, right, what's happening from a procedural justice perspective. And justice delayed is justice denied. So we gotta make sure that we're able to keep up with the need because, next slide, please. In two thousand and twenty-three, we opened six thousand four hundred and eight criminal cases in the Rockdale County DA's Office. As of two thousand and twenty-four, from January first until today, we are at four thousand five hundred and fifty-eight. So we are on pace to exceed our two thousand and twenty-three numbers. And these numbers are real. They're real in terms of time, hours, energy spent for both our Investigators to investigate and our Legal Assistants to be able to provide the necessary filing that has to go with each of these cases. And so the need is clear and it is real regarding my two thousand and twenty-five budgetary request for these two positions. And so just in closing, I would just ask that you would consider the requests made in the proper context of the work that we do here in the DA's Office and the impact that we can make by not being able to meet the needs, by not being as effective as we can be when it comes to how we're able to process our cases, investigate, and with our Legal Assistant. So I thank you so much for your time and attention. If there are any further questions, I would love to answer them now.
Commissioner Washington, any questions for the DA?
No, but thank you.
Commissioner Williams?
No, I don't, thank you.
Let's get the DA and the DA's Office around the applause. Thank you, Madam DA.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you so much. All right, so I think we're now
At lunch.
It's lunch, lunch.
Okay, all right, okay, well, guess what? It's lunch.
And so, Mr. Chairman, it looks like we're back at one o'clock with General Services.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. We'll be back at one o'clock.